Go ahead and call this call meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for March the 2nd, 2021 to order. Please join me in a moment of silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, only one item on the agenda before we get started. I would like to thank everyone that came out tonight and everyone that's either watching now or later online. This is the first budget workshop that we'll have. We'll have another one this Saturday at March the 6th at 9:00 a.m. And as I mentioned last time, as we get into the budget, it's worth noting that, you know, there'll be times where people don't necessarily agree. And we're all passionate about helping the city, but we don't have to be disagreeable either. So just try to keep that in mind. And again, this is a workshop for council, for us to discuss with city staff as they put the budget together. There's opportunities during the regular council meetings and public hearings and stuff for public input later on, but this is really just for us to legally come together and have a discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Counsel, tonight is the first in a couple of the series of workshops that we have coming up over the next 10, seven days, eight days. We'll be reviewing the capital plan, salary and benefits, and department requests over tonight. But I do have some budget calendar updates that we need to go over. First things first, we had the budget workshop on March the 6th at 9:00 a.m. And then on March the 9th, we have the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools presentation and outside agency presentations, which is a week from tonight. You'll notice the budget presentation's been moved up to April the 6th. It was on April the 13th, but we've moved that up a week. And the tax rate resolution is now moved to April 8th instead of March 23rd, and I'll go over why here in just a few moments. We will advertise the fiscal year 22 budget on April the 18th. A public hearing of the appropriation ordinance will occur on April the 27th. First reading of the budget ordinance is scheduled for May the 11th, and the second reading is scheduled for May the 25th. As you all know, this past year is what's considered a reassessment year. And then whenever there's any types of annual assessments, biannual assessments, or general reassessments of real property, and if there will be a change over 101% of the previous assessments, there are certain notice requirements that localities have to give to the public in order to comply with this statute. Here you can see, based on, and it's a lot, it's the second paragraph, based on 58.1-3321 Paragraph B, there are two notice provisions localities have to give. One is a 30-day notice in the paper if they anticipate a budget being passed prior to April the 30th. In our case, we will not have a budget passed prior to April 30th, so we have to give a 14-day notice. And so that 14-day clock will start ticking prior to April the 8th. I think it starts ticking on May the 24th, I think, two weeks prior. I don't, for Mr. Wingard, I don't have my phone here tonight, don't need my calculator as we've talked before, so I don't have my calendar in front of me, but it's two weeks prior to April 8th is when we have to give that notice. So we've had to push things back. We've also are just now getting some of the final numbers from the Commissioner of Revenue, and we would not have the appropriate time to publish a 14-day notice for the March 23rd tax rate. We've talked this over with the Treasurer. We do not anticipate any problems of them getting the tax notices out to citizens in the appropriate amount of time either. So that's why you saw that calendar change. More importantly, what has to go in that notice? So we have to tell the individuals, or the public, that the total assessed value of real property excluding any additional assessments due to new construction or improvements to property exceeds last year's total assessed value of real property by whatever percent that is. Lower the rate necessary to offset the increased assessment. The tax rates, which would levy the same amount of real estate taxes last year when multiplied by the new total assessed value of real estate with the exclusions mentioned above, would be X number of dollars per $100 of assessed value. This rate will be known as the lowered tax rate. The effective tax rate. The city of Bristol would propose to adopt a tax rate of X dollars per 100. The difference between the lowered tax rate and the proposed rate would be X dollars per 100, or blank percent. This difference will be known as the effective tax rate. We then have to notify people that individual property taxes may however increase at a percentage greater than or less than the above percentage. So that's why we've had to move things back. We have to have a notice. Oh, and by the way, we have to have the total budget, how it would exceed last year's total budget as well. So we've still got to work those numbers up. As I said, we're just getting some of those numbers from the Commissioner of Revenue, and this will take us some time just to double check and make sure our numbers are correct as we move forward throughout the process. So budget workshop purpose, aid city management in developing the budget, provide council as a whole with the opportunity to set clear directives of items to be funded. Budget is informative and for fiscal planning purposes only, and that's from the statute that I read at most of my council meetings when it comes to the workshop, and it keeps council apprised of significant items that have come up during the budget development process. So let's talk about the capital improvement program, and this is a summary by source. You can see the original budget for fiscal year 21 is on your left. Fiscal year 22 is in the second column. So transfers from the general fund this upcoming year would be $942,000. State funding, 1.3 million. Federal funding, 5.1 million. A total funding of 7.4 million. You can see in fiscal year 23, funding would go up to 8.1 million and then drops back down to 6.9, 3.1, and 1.6. However, those numbers will change as we get funding as we go throughout these next fiscal years. This is a summary of the capital improvement program by function. Fiscal year 22, there's $429,884 for public safety. Infrastructure, 6.585 million. Vehicle replacements, 442,000. For your total capital improvement program, a $7.4 million. You can see over the next several years, it's the same numbers as before as to how those funds will be expended in regards to public safety, moving into fiscal year 23 and 24. Also, Public Works in fiscal year 24, you can see some spending there that we know we will have as we continue to move throughout the next several years. Federal and state-funded infrastructure projects. Fiscal year 21 is on your left. Fiscal year 22 is your second column. State funds, 1.3 million. Federal funds, 5.8 million for total revenue of 6.5 million. Lee Highway Project Phase 1 Beast, 3.8 million. Bonham Road, Paulina Drive Sidewalk, 123,350. Lee Highway Old Airport Intersection, 150,000. The Euclid Avenue and Bob Morrison Signal with a pedestrian light, $395,000. Fairfield Street Bridge Improvements, 238,000. Goodson Street Bridge Replacement, 370,000. Oak Street Bridge Replacement, 470,000. Martin Luther King Bridge Rehabilitation, 170,000. Bonham Road Shared Use Path, 638,000. State and Piedmont Pedestrian Heads, 143,000, for a total of $6.5 million. This is the local funding plan. You can see local capitals, a half a million dollars. Local vehicles, 442,000, for a total of 942,000. That's 1.75% of the general fund, and that's a budget increase of $473,916 from last year. You can see as we move forward throughout the next several fiscal years, we hope to increase our capital improvement plan up to 3.12% of our general fund. Local capital projects, streets with drainage improvements is $30,000. Road projects, which is matches for roads and bridge projects of 40,116. Personal protective equipment in the fire department of $30,000. The Sheriff's has asked for jail plumbing of 160,000, and HAVAC for the jail of 239,884. That's a total of $500,000 for your local capital projects. This is the department request. We feel like it's important that council, the governing body, see what department heads are asking for as we go throughout the budget process. We're still early in the budget process, and I can promise you that not all of these requests will make it into the budget when I present my budget on April the 6th. Nonetheless, it's important for you all to know what departments say they need in order to operate efficiently and effectively. So fiscal year 22 department request. These are positions that were cut due to COVID last year. In information technology, a clerical position was cut, and they have asked for that position back. In the police department, you had an officer, a records clerk, and a receptionist. Positions were cut. Those have been requested to have back. The fire department is requested to have one firefighter back. The animal shelter is seeking to have their part-time employee back. And the Parks and Rec Programming Senior Center Supervisor has been asked to, they need that position back as well. At six and a half positions, total cost with benefits included, $326,683. New positions requested, so this is beyond, this here gets us back to where we would have been last year had it not been for COVID. This here are new positions that are requested. The Treasurer's seeking to take her part-time employee to full-time. The Finance Department is seeking an assistant payroll clerk. IT is seeking a network administrator. Police Department is seeking a major. The Fire Department is asking for four additional firefighters. The Sheriff is asking for three deputies and a cook. In Public Works, the Streets Division is asking for two employees. They are also asking for another engineer. Fleet Department is asking for one mechanic. The Maintenance of Building Division is asking for a custodian. Community and Economic Development, the Director position there has been vacant for over a year. That position needs to be filled. Economic Development Bookkeeper is been asked for, and then IDA is seeking an attorney, and that's one as well. So total request there is $894,386. This here is, what I was going to present was some options for potential raises for employees. Throughout the past winter, the Virginia Legislature, they were talking about 3% to 3.5% raises across the board for state employees. And over the weekend, it was announced that they are doing a 5% raise for employees across the board. We do not have that number yet, so just for the benefit of tonight, we didn't feel as appropriate to put that number out there just yet. We need to just verify what that number would be and how it would impact the city. What I would say is, when state employees get a raise, you'll have the school system, all constitutionals, DSS get a 5% raise, and city employees may or may not get a raise at all. And that creates a disparity between employees, and ultimately, it's the city employees who are not getting the raise and everybody else is. It also creates a disparity within departments, especially some of the constitutional officers, because some of their employees are locally funded, which means a counterpart that is state-funded is getting a 5% raise, and the person doing the same exact job may not get a raise or get a lesser of a raise. So we're looking at those numbers to how that would impact the budget as we move forward. Department request, under the City Attorney line item, I've asked for an increase of 156,469. That is to deal with ongoing litigation under the Professional Services line item. And there's also a $30,000 request in there for an update to our ordinances through MuniCode. They have the ability to go through our ordinances to make sure everything is up to date. IT is asking for $80,000 in the line item of Maintenance of Computers and Software. What that includes is security measures and an HR software as well. Operating Supplies and Materials of 116,949. That is for public safety data center overhaul, workstations, and equipment for various departments. Software for Public Safety, 84,597. That is the Southern software that is used, a cloud service, and then what's called a power phone. The Registrar is asking for an increase of $22,085. This is due to new certification standards that are required to have due to standards that have been implemented by the General Assembly when it comes to voting, and a lot of this is encrypted software that has to take place. Police Department, motor fuel and lubricants, an increase of 17,000. That's mainly due to the fact there are more vehicles there. If you all remember, we, through the COPS grant, we hired an additional four officers, so there's some more vehicles. And we will be looking at the motor fuel costs throughout the city as we move forward as motor fuel is increasing. Clothing and personal supplies is an increase of $10,986, mainly due to new employees. Other equipment of 73,000, that's taser replacements. If I'm not mistaken, tasers expire after five, or these tasers that they currently have will no longer be serviced by the current business, and you have to have a certification for those, so those tasers have to be replaced. Fire Department, 29,000 for Maintenance of Machine and Equipment. This increase would include just typically maintenance stuff that needs to be done at each one of the fire stations. And then there is also a $5,000 in there for maintenance of a stretcher system due to COVID. Education and Training is $18,000. This is what the Fire Department calls the Bridge to the Paramedic Program for two individuals per shift. It's $3,000 per individual times six individuals. This would allow many of our intermediate EMTs, I think I'm calling them right, to go to school and get certified as paramedics. Under Medical Supplies, a $10,000 increase, and that's just basically because the cost of medical supplies have increased over the past year. And then 30,600, actually, that can come out of that because that's over in our capital, if I'm not mistaken. That's stuff that will be ongoing for years to come, so that can come out. Department request under Sheriff and Jail, Contract Labor of $10,000. That is, let me find here, 5,000 of that is to have a physician on call and available for the Sheriff's Department, and the rest is for the increased cost of part-time staff simply because minimum wage will be increasing, and there'll be cost adjustments throughout the city in the Contract Labor Department line items simply because some of our contract labor employees do not meet that $11 minimum wage standard. 170,416 for Professional Services. This is $150,000 for a jail study. And $20,000 for forensic discharge planning services. $708,000 for inmate housing. That's in addition to the 1 million that's currently funding, so it'd be a $1.7 million line item to house inmates outside of our current jail. That's 120 inmates at $39 per day. Inmate medical, an increase of $30,000. It's just simply because of the number of inmates that we currently house. Maintenance of Building and Property, 52,500. That's the estimated cost for various repairs such as certain doors, cell blocks, lights, roof vents, cameras, and other miscellaneous items. $15,000, that is going to repaint some of the new vehicles that the Sheriff will get through the capital plan. Housekeeping Supplies, an increase of 10,000, and that's just due to the fact supplies have increased in cost. A $10,000 increase for, under, I've lost my spot, Operating Supplies. That's for portable radios and guns. And then, there was a lot, no, I'll take that back, that's over on the capital side now. Inspections, Contract Labor of $24,000. That has not been a line item under inspections previously, but that is because we do have a significant economic development project that is coming to the city that will hopefully be ramping up very soon. As you all know, we only have one commercial building inspector in the city, and in order to keep things moving along at the Bristol Mall, it's anticipated there would be a need for an additional commercial building inspector so those plans could continue to be approved and assessed as they come in. Then LODA, that is an additional $10,000 increase, and that's because there are seven new positions. Public Works, Streets, Contract Labor, the 23,000. That's simply the adjustment for the minimum wage that's increasing. Maintenance of Building and Property, that is for non-VDOT maintained roads, for paving for those non-VDOT maintained roads. Tipping Fee, an increase of $50,000 at the landfill, and that's just based on the actuals that we're seeing throughout the year. Building Maintenance, once again, Contract Labor of 39,660. Some of that goes to actually hiring someone, an additional custodian, but a piece of that is to make sure that we're paying the people the appropriate amount. Maintenance of Building and Property, $37,000. That's for your typical just maintenance of current city structures that maintenance needs to happen throughout the year. Municipal Parking, 115,750. That's for the repaving of the WCYB parking lot and the parking lot at the animal shelter. Parks and Rec Operations, Contract Labor, once again, there are a significant number of people within Parks and Rec Ops and programs that are Contract Labor, and we have to make adjustments due to the minimum wage increase. So you'll see 15,000 under Operations and 29,500 under Contract Labor. Maintenance of Building and Property under Parks and Rec Ops, an increase of $42,000. That's for a 24-gauge metal roof at the Bristol baseball field on the fieldhouse there. Other improvements, $130,000. This is for girls softball field and bleacher replacement. That would be moved from the current Highland View site over to Sugar Hollow Park. We have to remember, when you are funding boys and girls sports, things need to be equal, and this is one of those things to make sure that girls softball is treated equal as boys' baseball. I've already talked about Parks and Rec Programming, Clear Creek Golf, increase in Contract Labor. Once again, it's due to the minimum wage increase. And the Public Library, increase of $32,500. That is to fund the Jones Creativity Center. This is, years ago, that was funded through CDBG funds, and over time, CDBG funding decreased, and it's only funded by $5,000 now through CDBG. Bristol, Tennessee continues to fund that at $32,500, and they are asking that we fund that as well. Economic Development Activities, that's Professional Services, is $47,000. The IDA has mentioned that we have an outside consultant come in and try to help us prepare for the influx of cash that we would receive from Hard Rock being located here in Bristol, and how we should spend money in order to help the city and attract more visitors. And then the Contingency Fund would be increased by $199,699 from the previous year. So those are the significant department requests, over $10,000. Health Insurance Rates, currently 85% of our employees partake in the city health insurance. We have four plans. A $500 deductible comprehensive plan, 51% of the 85% of the employees are on that plan. 2% are on the $500 deductible preventative plan. 41% are on the $1,000 deductible comprehensive plan, and 5% are on the $1,000 preventative plan. This will be an increase this year of $54,000 to our general fund based on the health insurance rate increase. And our next budget workshop is March the 6th at 9:00 a.m. So I will sit down and let you all discuss, and we'll try to answer any questions that you all have.
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. E. One thing, if you don't mind, could you email a copy of that to all of us?
I'd like mine in paper form, please. Well, let me keep that, and I'll give it to you.
I guess we'll start, does anybody have any question?
I do. So a couple of things that you had mentioned, I just wanted to follow back up on. The one thing I would just note that we all know, but maybe it's important for people watching at home or watching this later, the WCYB parking lot is owned by us. We're not repaving it for WCYB, just to be clear. The thing that I had a question about was back when we were talking about capital, capital projects upcoming. You had in here for, give me a second, let me get my number right. For fiscal year 2021, you have in here rehab for the Martin Luther King Bridge for $712,000. So do you know what that entails specifically? Because I know that we had had discussions on the Transportation Commission several years ago about the bridge, and it's, we can't replace it because it's owned by Norbit Southern. So what kind of rehab does that entail?
The Martin Luther King Bridge?
Yeah.
That's owned, that's the Mary Street Bridge.
The Mary Street Bridge.
Excuse me, never mind.
You're talking about the bridge that's adjacent to the jail?
Yeah, never mind. Well, I have no questions then.
I mean, a lot to look at and think about, of course, a lot of things. I guess the one thing, at some point, and you mentioned it a couple of times, it's good for people, again, that's watching this to know, is last year, the General Assembly raised the minimum wage in the Commonwealth of Virginia, although I don't think that goes into effect until this July, I think. They delayed it, I know, because of COVID, but they did pass it last year. So, and I guess, you know, each one of these line items, that's especially with Contract Labor, but there's also other employees, probably to get a handle on just what that one thing altogether is costing us, and how, you know, at some point, we probably need to look at how that affects all of our salaries. I mean, is, you know, people doing comparable jobs, and, you know, you have to move up, so then does that move them up next to somebody that, you know, the differential shrunk, so now they probably deserve a little more. And I got a feeling we're going to hear this when Dr. Perigent comes and makes his case for the schools as well. I'm sure they have a similar issue with their pay scales.
Go ahead.
Hear me? Yes. Here's the schedule of the increases. The minimum wage right now is $7.25. May 1st of 2021, it goes to $9.50. And then January of '22, it goes to $11. Then after that potential increases, in January of '23, it goes to 12. Now, I'm not sure if the 12 has been approved yet in '23, but for sure, the $9.50, May 1st, and then the $11 in January of '22. As we've looked at the salary hourly rate makeup within the city, there weren't that many direct impacts to city employees. Most were above the scale of the, to the $11 most. There will be a couple of adjustments there, but the majority of the impact for the city has been for the departments that use Contract Labor, and that is where the impact has been. That is why in Mr. E.'s presentation, you've seen those increases there. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, no. I mean, part of that's a little bit, some people understand why that's there, but, so you're basing that on the $11 an hour rate since that would be in effect for half the budget?
That will have to be in effect in January of '22.
Yeah, so you're just going ahead and basing...
I'm assuming the departments are calculating that based on when it is impacted. Because that flows through the temp agencies, that's how we pay that, that really will be their discretion as to when they increase. I would imagine they won't increase until they have to increase. But the minimum wage going up to $9.50 will impact the entire fiscal year of '22. But the minimum wage going up to $9.50 will impact the entire fiscal year of '22.
And part of this year, right?
Yes. Yes.
Any more questions, I guess?
I just had a quick question. So the plan is to take a certain percentage of our general fund monies over the next few years and get to, say roughly about 3% for the capital improvement program. Is that percentage... Is that common? Do other localities do roughly that same percentage of their general fund?
I went to a conference year before last, I believe it was. And that was... That was one of the topics, talking about pay-as-you-go funding of your capital. And that was one of the recommendations that I heard, the 3%. And when we came back and discussed at the finance committee level, we felt like that was a good goal for the city. Keeping in mind that we've been aware that our capital plan has been underfunded for many, many years. And we couldn't get there all at once. So the goal was, over several years, to get to 3% of your general fund expenditures. But that was... That was a recommendation I heard at that conference and seemed to be, in discussion amongst my peers, a good goal.
A couple of things. You had the one slide about salaries and the impact on what the general assembly just did a couple of days ago. So I understand why you had to kind of change that at the last minute. When do you anticipate having that information for us?
I would expect within the next two weeks.
Okay. And then the slide on insurance. When do we have to determine that rate? It seems to me we always have to do that a little ahead because you have to know that information for open enrollment, at least in the past. It seems like we've kind of done that before we've got really into the budget or sometimes even, I think, before it's even been presented or right after.
The... We both want to answer? Go ahead.
You go, Mr. Eads.
What we did last year, there was not a significant change or was no change at all, actually. So we didn't even bring that before council because we just kept everything the same. This year, we can bring that back if necessary. However, based on what we've seen in the changes, it does not look like... If I had my other slide, when you factor in what the changes are and how we ratio that out, it seems like there'll be very minor adjustments as to what we would need to make for those plans. So we can bring that back before council, probably within the next couple of weeks, I would say, at the last meeting in March to get that approval.
I think the local choice likes to have that information by April 1st. We're allowed a deadline... An extension of the deadline. And typically, we've extended that just to get that in front of council for approval. But we... Not much... Pretty quickly after April 1st, we have to have that submitted.
That's fine. I just know in the past, too, when we had those discussions, I mean, sometimes it has jumped quite a bit. And, you know, when you look at... If you're looking at any type of pay increase or anything like that, you kind of want to balance it out, too, between your insurance. You don't want to give somebody a raise and then turn around and take it back up necessarily in the insurance. So there's a balance there, but it sounds like the...
If I'm not mistaken, health insurance rates have not increased over the past two years, I think? Is that right?
One year, they stayed the same. One year, they actually decreased. And the city absorbs the decrease of that.
A few years back, they were increasing at a very fast pace.
This is the first year in three cycles there's been an increase?
And it's a 3% increase, which, to me, over the course of three years, and I only have a one increase of 3%, that's pretty good.
And then I made the note here, with the Jones Creativity, if we fund that, they won't get any CDBG. That's completely general fund.
That's correct.
So that would free up additional money that they've been getting out of the CDBG?
That's correct.
You said for the jail... There was a total cost of professional services of $170,000. But how much of that was specifically for a jail study?
$150,000. $150,000 for a jail study. And then there was roughly $20,000... I can't remember that number specifically. I've got it right here. It is $20,416 for forensic discharge planning services.
What would the turnaround be on a jail study?
A jail study's going to take time. 18 to 24 months, probably. And that depends on when you get it submitted. Because once you submit it and it goes through the study process, then it's got to be approved by the general assembly. So it's not something that you can get today and start working on and have an answer. You know, if we approve this today, they would have to do the study. They would not have it done in time for next year's general assembly session. So then it would be waiting until the following general assembly session for approval.
So is that the full cost of it? Or do you split that up over two fiscal years?
You're... No, you'd probably have your jail study done in one fiscal year.
What would be the scope of the study?
The scope of that study is to determine what your jail population would do over the next 10 years. And that study dictates the size of the jail locality would have to build based on the projected number of inmates. What I can tell you, the 2012 study that the city did, it projected 270 inmates in 10 years. And we're at 280 inmates in 10 years.
All right. So the next budget session, work session Saturday, is solid waste disposal fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Any comments? Any questions?
I think I just have one comment. I know it's very early in... You know, it may not seem like it, but it is very early in the budget season or in the budget discussions. And I know you all don't even have an actual full budget crafted right now. But I just want to thank you all for the work you've put in so far on this. I want to thank the departments for submitting all the requests. I know that it may not be that they'll be able to get everything that they want. And I know that they never do. But I do appreciate being able to see all of their requests and hear what their priorities are and what they need. So thank you to you all for the work. And thank you to the departments and the department heads for giving us a list of wants. And hopefully, we can deliver on some of it.
Anything else? Well, if nobody has anything else to add, then I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. And we'll meet for our next workshop Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.